Okay, call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Pecoson City Council for September 22nd, 2014. If we could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and the place of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received as a city. As we deliberate the issues this evening before us, please grant us a portion of your wisdom so that we treat and perceive each individual. Lay out a special blessing this evening on those in our armed forces, as well as those in our public safety at either the federal, state, or local levels. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The Clinton's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I know this is going to be a little bit of a surprise and maybe anticlimactic.
Ken is still here?
Not here.
Where'd he go?
He's probably down running down the answers to your questions, if I don't count.
I guess we can defer this and come back. Why don't we go ahead and do approval of the minutes? Counsel, y'all with me?
Yeah.
All right, let's go for approval of the minutes and see if Ken is still around.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes for the regular session of September 8th, 2014.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve the regular meeting minutes of September 8th. Questions or comments? Not Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Since I've read the minutes, I'll say aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and the work session?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the work session of September 8th, 2014.
Is there a second?
No second, yeah.
Okay, questions or comments on those? Not Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, now we'll try and reset this. Ken, can you join me at the podium? I have to apologize to Ken for not doing this earlier. It's been something that's been on my mind since we had the community rating system, the FEMA meeting in the city of Pecoson, and we were awarded a certificate from FEMA for the National Flood Insurance Programs Community Rating System. I will tell everybody in this city that there is a heart and soul and somebody who really cares about your home, making it safe, and about how much you pay for flood insurance to protect that, and that is Ken Somerset. I will tell everybody in Pecoson, and I tell those that I work with, you know, most people -- in fact, last week I had a couple of folks say, "Oh, well, it floods out there." And I said, "Well, not in the rain. It didn't flood us at all." And guess what? We get a 10% reduction on our flood insurance, and we don't even have to spend 15 minutes on the phone. Okay? So, that's all because of the great work that Ken Somerset has done for this city. It's not because of the topography, it's not because council wished it to be, it's not because of many members of the staff, it's really because of one central leader who has taken this issue on. And this plaque was presented to me as the mayor to basically represent for the city of Pecoson. It's a great accomplishment, a community rating system of eight, which every homeowner in this city should be aware of and what it does for you personally. But this plaque belongs in the office of Ken Somerset and in the planning division. And this is my way of saying thank you for the tremendous work that you have done, thank you for being the model employee that you are, and helping the citizens of the city of Pecoson, and council thanks you as well. So, thank you very much. Now he feels like he can't leave. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings this evening. Actually, we have an audience for visitors. I don't mean to skip that, I don't see too many people in the audience, but I will open the audience for visitors for those who would like to address council on any issue. Okay, I'll close that audience for visitors, seeing none, and move to the public hearing section. The first public hearing is an ordinance amending Article 1, Section 1, Tag 3, and Article 5, Section 5.2 of the zoning ordinance to add a definition of covered piers and adding covered piers to the list of permitted uses in the RS District. Randy, how would y'all like to present?
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with the council, I'd just like to call Karen Holloway forward to present this. It's pretty straightforward, but for those at home, you may not have any idea what we're talking about, so a summary may be very helpful for them as well.
This is an amendment that we've been looking to make since 2012 when we did our last conditional use permit for a covered pier or gazebo on a pier. In 2007, the state amended their law to allow for covered structures on piers besides covered boat slips, basically gazebos, and they are allowed to be up to 400 square feet in size. We have allowed them only with a conditional use permit. The last one was done in 2012, as I said, with some conditions on it. So, we kind of modeled this after that. What we would like to do is add a definition for covered pier in the ordinance that would allow for a structure that is open-sided or sided with transparent insect screening, having a gable, gambrel, or hip-style shingled roof with a minimum pitch of four to 12 and measuring no larger than 400 square feet in size. The maximum height of the structure shall be no higher than 15 feet above mean high water, and occupancy or storage above the ceiling joists shall be prohibited. This is all kind of in keeping with our covered boat slip ordinance that we have now. And then in Article 5, Section 5-2, under permitted uses in the zoning ordinance, we would like to allow covered piers by right as well. One thing I did want to bring to your attention, the conditional use permit that was allowed in 2012, there was another condition on that, and that was that if a covered pier is allowed on the property, a covered boat slip would not be allowed, so it could be one or the other. And I don't know if you want to add that into there or not. There is the potential that you could have 1,100 square feet almost of covered structures on a pier without a condition like that, so.
Are you saying on the same pier, or so if someone had a large amount of waterfront property and had two piers, one for the boat and one for what?
Well, you can only have one pier per parcel by state law.
In perspective of how big the parcel is?
Right, that's right.
Karen?
Yes.
The 400 feet match the state rule, what about the 15-foot height requirement? And I ask that question because if 15 foot is to the top of the roof, then by the time you have a four to one pitch and you drop down, there might be a problem with a lot of boats on a lift hitting the structure of the roof. So, is the 15-foot also matching the state requirement?
The state doesn't have a maximum height that I know of, but our height, the way that we measure the height now has changed with that definition that we changed a few years ago, the height definition that allows you to measure to the midpoint between the ease and the peak. So, that allows a little bit more leeway as far as that goes.
I think some, a lot of years ago, didn't we have some problem with blocking views of adjacent properties?
That's always a concern. That was a concern on the application that I'm referring to in 2012. One of the neighbors was concerned. We also get those concerns on covered boat slips as well. It's pretty typical.
And the roof types, you said hip roof, what else?
Gable or gambrel.
What's the difference between gable and a gambrel?
The gable is an A-frame, and the gambrel is kind of sloped on all sides.
I know this is on accessory structures, but I remember there was one that we basically ran it through, and it actually got a variance, I believe, from P C A years ago, but it required a hip roof. And the reason I like the hip roof is because of just what you were talking about. It doesn't have the depth, you know, it takes, it's a shallower angle and doesn't have that kind of depth, but I don't think it really applies to this. It's something we should probably consider for the larger square footage, which would be a boat lift. But if you can update me, and you don't have to do that right now, don't go by memory, but what does our boat lift ordinance require?
The same thing.
Same thing.
I took this right out of the boat lift definition.
Does this make sense for like a gazebo? But I really would try to discourage the straight A-frame roofs because they do block views. Okay? But that's something for another day. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. This is the subject of a public hearing, and I'll open that public hearing at this time for anybody who would like to talk about accessory structures on covered, or basically a covered structure on a pier. Now's that time. Okay? I see staff all politely nodding in the background that they don't want to talk about it, but I'll close that public hearing and ask for consideration by council. And before I start this, Judy, is this something that we're going to run through in one time?
It's presented as such, but you can amend, make your motion to dispense if you like. But it is presented as having two readings.
Has two readings, okay.
With a 30-day effective date after adoption, so.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 1, General Provisions, Section 1-3, Definitions, and Article 5, RS District Regulations, Section 5-2, Permitted Uses as it pertains to covered piers.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve this, and that would mean that we would come back next time and go through again. Is that correct? Everybody on the same page?
So, we're not voting, we're giving a chance for the public to have comment on this?
Correct. We're basically saying we're going to take a preliminary vote tonight, and we're going to hear this again at the next council meeting. And I think that's well thought out. Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? Not Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. The next public hearing this evening is an ordinance amending Appendix A, Article 11.4, Environmental Management Area or EMA Overlay District of the zoning ordinance to reflect definitions and numbering changes to recent revisions to the state code. Who's going to really tell me what this means? Okay, thank you, Ellen. Would you tell us what the -- that's a very wordy way of saying something very simple, I'm pretty sure. Why don't you start with that?
Good evening. What you have before you is basically changes to the city's Chesapeake Bay Overlay District ordinance, which is part of the zoning ordinance, that consists of eight changes to references to the state code. Basically, the state code was renumbered a couple of years ago, and three name changes from the Department of Environmental, Department of Conservation and Recreation to the Department of Environmental Quality. And this is a continuation of some bills that city council considered a few months ago that were a result of changes to the state stormwater program. The General Assembly passed some bills that basically put control and oversight of three of the state's environmental programs, stormwater, erosion and sediment control, and the Chesapeake Bay program, took that from under the purview of the Soil and Water Conservation Board and gave to the State Water Control Board, and took it out of the Department of Conservation and Recreation's hands and gave it to the Department of Environmental Quality. Earlier this year, you passed changes to ordinances to revise code references, city code references to the proper state laws in the erosion and sediment control law and the stormwater program, and this is the same type action in reference to the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. So, basically, we're renumbering to match what the state code says.
There's really no change in?
Substance change.
Substance here?
No.
It's just basically updating. Okay. Questions? Counsel before we have Ellen say that?
Just a statement, this is from Ellen, and she is from the city, and she is here to help.
Very good. She's the one person who gets to invoke all of this, that's what I keep saying. 17,000 in the EPA, what is my number? 17,000 in the EPA, probably about 600 to 1,000 at the state level, all passing this ordinance down to Ellen to enforce.
Now, I feel very tired, thank you.
Karen helps.
Okay, Karen. This is the subject of a public hearing, and I'll open that public hearing if anybody would like to address council on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pecoson, Virginia by amending Appendix A, Article 11.4, Environmental Management Area Overlay District to revise Code of Virginia citations and dispense with a second reading.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve the ordinance and that we dispense with a second reading. Questions or comments on the motion? None? Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. That closes the public hearing section, and we move on to new business. And the first item under new business is a resolution authorizing the extension of a contract with financial advisors. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, Theresa and I are asking you to consider authorizing me to extend by an additional year our contract with Davenport Company. As you know, they have been, and I think you would agree, an excellent partner in our quest for and in our achievement of AAA rating, and as a non-binding unofficial guideline, never a great idea to change your financial advisor six months after you make it to AAA. But more to the point, they are an excellent company, and they do an excellent job. The reason we brought it to you now, even though the contract doesn't expire until the end of December, is if you wish to go out, it would provide us sufficient time to do that.
I'm pretty sure that you're not going to have a problem with this. Anybody prepared to make a motion on the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for financial advisory services with Davenport and Company, LLC.
Second. Okay, a motion made in second. Questions or comments of council? Not Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, the next item under new business is an ordinance making a transfer from the general fund to the special revenue fund to reimburse uncollected cost for the elevation of 66 Rens Road.
Mr. Mayor, as council will recall, particularly those of you that were on council in 2006, this pertains to one of the two elevation grant programs the city participated in. At that time, the way it worked with the homeowner contribution was half of the ICC money that they were eligible for, $15,000, was presented upfront, and the other half upon completion of the project. In one instance, as we completed out both of those grant programs, in one instance, the second half, the post-completion, is deemed uncollectible, the person whose project it was has passed away. Because we have this as an accounts receivable in the special fund, we need to go ahead now and close that out with an infusion of cash because we actually have paid for the cost. But it is uncollectible, and we would ask you to make the transfer, and then we will go ahead and write off the debt as uncollectible.
Okay.
Theresa, did I get that?
Yeah, I have a question regarding that. I served as a citizen representative on the initial grants that were received for elevating houses, and there was a provision in those grants that if there was any reason why the homeowner left the property or was deceased or transferred, that the lien was placed on that property. So, I'm wondering, is that not the way this should work the same way?
The house was foreclosed upon.
There is a lien on file at the court.
But it was foreclosed upon, and?
So, I'm assuming that the foreclosure didn't bring enough to cover?
It wasn't foreclosed upon by us, it was foreclosed upon by the lender.
And we have no recourse to recover that, do we? Whatever, lien was initially there.
I believe that's correct.
I just asked, you know, it's taxpayers' money, and I just have that question.
It's the same amount.
Same amount.
Same number.
15,000 that we're talking about.
All right.
For this particular house, the cost of the elevation was considerably higher than the grant. She's correct in that the lien is placed on the grant amount. This 15,000 was for the additional cost that was going to be incurred to completely elevate the home.
So, there was no lien on that amount?
Not on that 30,000.
Okay. Somebody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional preparations and transfers fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Second. A motion made in second that we approve this ordinance, making the transfer, closing the books out on this item, and hopefully we'll learn from this in the future or whatever. So, with that being said, questions or comments of council? Not, and Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Comments of the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we have three. I wanted to commend both our economic development staff, our partners at P B A, and a host of other folks that helped us once again win the Chamber of Commerce Angles Business Expo Best in Show Award. That's Team Afer, thank you to the whole team. I want to commend a very similar group of people for the city recently being awarded the V M L Achievement Award, Communications. That, unlike the general award, which is population bracketed, is competed upon statewide, and recent year winners have been Alexandria and Fairfax, Hampton, Fredericksburg, all places considerably larger than us, and we did very well. I want to commend them for that. And lastly, I wanted to commend the Public Works Department. As you'll recall, we recently had a work session talking about possible things we could do to help with some of the traffic issues that citizens have raised. I left out of town and asked Tom to consider what it would take to put a little bit extra shoulder on Cedar at the intersection there at Cedar, and on Tuesday, he emailed me a picture of it was done. And those are the kind of people that we have working on it, things like that for us, same people that keep that drainage system working well, and I'm sure everybody appreciates it. I went over there several times to make that turning radius to see if it was better, and it certainly seems better to me. So, I wanted to commend them for that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Council directives, we'll start down there with you, Councilman Vernal.
Well, don't forget the workboat races are coming up this weekend, and hopefully we have a, it looks like we're going to have good weather, and certainly hope we have a good turnout and support the local waterman and all the activities that will be going on there. Works out very nicely out there.
Councilman Green?
To add on to that, we've expanded the food varieties for this year. We'll have Captain Harrell's with seafood, we'll have Bojangles with barbecue and biscuits and chicken tenders and sweets for the kids, and we'll have Big Daddy's kettle corn, corn dogs, and phone cakes. So, we've expanded the menu quite a bit, should be something there for everybody, so I hope a big crowd.
So, we're not going to be able to get a specially cooked Buddy Green hamburger?
No, Buddy Green gave up cooking for this event. Too many people got sick.
Okay.
The other part is to echo Randy's thanks for the Public Works for reacting so quickly to Cedar Road in Little Florida. And it was brought to my attention by one of our employees that there's one other thing we might can do to help that situation, and I ran by there this afternoon to verify, but if you're turning to the west off of Cedar onto Little Florida, the curve that comes around is blocked by two large pine trees that appear to be in the city right of way. The trees have just about been destroyed by the power line companies cutting them out of the way, the power lines, so I can't imagine that anybody would be upset if we took the rest of those trees down, and it would open up the sight view for people turning, because you really, the people in that curve come up on you quickly, and you can't see them because of those two trees.
Yeah, it is a very short, visual distance.
I don't think you'll have any problem with that. Randy, just get back with us if y'all feel like that's something that we can take care of.
We still have a tree cutter contract, did I come?
Yes.
And the other thing, Mr. Mayor, is the food bank is tomorrow from 10 to 1 at the Old City Hall. The American Legion is hosting this one.
Okay, great. Councilman Ayer?
Condolences once again, it seems like we're doing a lot of this lately, to the family of Tommy Quinn, who recently passed, a longtime teacher at the high school. Also, there is a collection, October the 4th through the 8th, of household chemicals, which I have a ton of paint myself to get rid of, plastic bags, computer electronics, October the 4th from 8:00 to noon at the city pool. So, if you've got those kind of things, it's a good time to dispose of them.
Okay, thank you. Bud?
Nothing to add than this, anything.
Okay, Karen?
Only thing to Councilman Vernal and Councilman Green we're talking about, there's also a fishing tournament, and I believe there's a walk run that's all associated with the Seafood Fest this weekend, and I think they plan on a pretty big operation on the Saturday as well. Just thank all of y'all for the kind words and flowers that you sent, appreciate it.
Yeah, I think we missed Vice Mayor Freeman and Councilman Ayer's last meeting. We're glad you two have been able to rejoin us, actually rejoiced in that, that's great. We basically struggled without y'all, there's only four of us, and we couldn't move the meeting as fast as we normally do. But with that being said, I'd like to echo, and I think most of y'all, Dave Callis is probably out there very proud of y'all sponsoring or basically talking for his Seafood Festival because we normally get to listen to it. Every meeting, I think Randy mourned me, but now every place I go with Dave, he does say something about the Seafood Festival.
What topic is it?
And to be quite honest with you, it's great to have that kind of pride in what you do, and it's basically a source of pride for the city as well. So, thank you for what community development, I mean, basically Parks and Rec will be doing for us in the coming weeks, basically a long celebration of that as well. They are very busy down there, the V M L Achievement Award in Communications. I will tell you that I believe that's one of the proudest things that this city's had in a long time, because it's not just about the ability to pass common sense laws that we do, but the ability to communicate with the citizens, the ability to communicate our message out to others. the citizens, the ability to communicate our message out to others, to basically tie economic development back to the homeowner as well as the business. That's really what it's all been about, and it's paying great dividends. There's very few people that don't know anymore where Pecosin is. In fact, the mayor of Norfolk did mention to me the other day that before, he didn't really realize where Pecosin was, but he's got it now.
I think it has more to do with rebranding.
Keep driving it on. He's got it now. I would like to have the citizens' ear for just a minute. I have a little report. You know, we have the folks that walk around, all the community groups that pick up the city of Pecosin that do the adoptive spot, and many of them are reporting to me an increase in the stuff that they're collecting. In other words, that we're starting to have a problem with littering in the city. And I would ask us all to rededicate ourselves. We've got a very fine city here, and it is our responsibility to keep it and our responsibility to say something to those who do not appreciate that. So, please turn an open ear to that in the coming weeks, especially with the influx of guests that we'll have for the seafood festival. And in parallel with that, there's one thing that I would like to task the city staff to bring us back. And this is a discussion on the trees on With Creek Road. They've been there for probably 20 years now.
Too long.
Too long. What I would say is I'm not a tree hater, so please don't call me up and go, how could you possibly be talking about that? But I want the citizens to take a look at the trees along With Creek Boulevard, With Creek Road, and look at the width of the stump. They are maxed out. They're at their maximum capacity between the curb and the sidewalk. They are maintained, I'll call it, by our Public Works, which basically means we cut off what's falling off of them, and I think that we can replace them with something better. I am not about to strip all the trees off of With Creek Road, but I would like to engage our master gardeners. I would like to engage anybody from the public who is interested in a project such as this and to come up with a plan that, for the eventual replacement of those trees. But I think it's high time, I know we talk about it all the time, I know our Public Works, it has to maintain them, it has to go out there and repair the damage to either the curb or to the sidewalks, which is costing the taxpayers money. I think that we can come up with a solution that's just as beautiful and that we can do it, hopefully in my mind preemptively, that we can plant before we take down. But I would like to get engaged on that. That is something that has been long overlooked, and I appreciate staff taking a look at that and then bringing it back to council, how we want to head in that direction.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay? And that's all I have for this evening. No closed session this evening, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Go move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion made in second, and we adjourn. Judy, please?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.